Okay, I'll call the order this Sparks City Council meeting of March 13th with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini absent. City Council members Abbott, Lawson, Smith, Bybee, Dare, City Attorney Adams, City Manager Driscoll. We have a quorum, thank you.
Our invocation speaker today is Pastor Steve Bond from the Summit Christian Church. Welcome, Steve. Haven't seen you in a while, thank you. Is there a real stand?
Thank you. We are serving in our incredibly beautiful city. Lord, it's a spectacular day outside and we've weathered a long winter. You have guided us and been with our city all through these winter months and now as we move into spring, I want to pray, Father, for a very specific measure of wisdom to come over these ladies and gentlemen. Father, would you guide them to true consensus on the issues that stand before them? We thank you for the amazing blessing it is to live in a city like Sparks. We thank you that the leadership for a long time has been wise, good in so many ways, and that we experience the blessing of peace and prosperity that ultimately comes from you. And so, Father, in today's deliberations, I would ask whether it might be any moment of discontention, I just pray, Father, that you would give wisdom and help them to navigate through the issues. Father, we pray for these that will be making decisions, that they would have peace in their hearts. We pray, Father, that in their personal issues where there might be struggles, we pray that you would give them victory and the season serving here as elected officials in our city, that it would be one of the best seasons of their lives, that you would grow them as individuals and that they would be blessed personally and professionally. So, Father, in the next hour or so into your hands, we know that you are good and all loving and kind, and we know we can trust you to listen to our prayers, especially when we ask for wisdom, which you so clearly invite us to do in your word. So, great, in the name of Jesus, I do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Very nice. And before we do the pledge, I'm going to turn my phone off so I don't get in trouble.
The $10 fine.
I know, I know. Mr. Crutch, would you lead it in the pledge allegiance, please?
I introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment period. Anybody wishing to speak, if you'd fill out a card for me, please, and then we'll call your name. I have some cards to start off with. Anonymous, come on up. You have three minutes, ma'am. How are you? Thank you, welcome.
I picked up where I left off a couple of weeks ago. We are asking that the videos of the council meetings be consistent with the council meeting minutes. The council meeting minutes are not, public comment is not in the order that the council meeting minutes are. And the reason this is an issue is when a child can go into a court of law in regards to a domestic violence situation, they can get an injunction immediately. We have easy access for the children to go into a court of law with a video. However, when council meeting minutes come out, which usually is, several weeks can go by, people, council members are on vacation, they're not available, meeting minutes in this case didn't come out until almost six months later, and they contradict the video. So, it's going to cause a problem for the child when the child finally does go before a court of, a jury and/or any jurist, because there's going to be inconsistency in the discovery. As you know, I come to you in the context of the Sparks v. Sparks case and the council is found culpable by the Nevada Supreme Court for funding Heidi Shaw destroying evidence. One of the reasons those council meeting minutes that weren't released for almost six months was a problem because the attorney for the city said that they're prosecuting domestic violence three times the national rate. Well, what that means to a re-survivor, and the attorney should have stated more facts on that matter, but what it means to a re-survivor like a child, it means that three times the amount of evidence may be destroyed by Heidi Shaw, and that's significant. Marcia Burke Bigler is the county commissioner, and she went on, she hijacked an agenda item and stated that the district courts are destroying child abuse evidence. Well, that's very significant, but the children didn't find out until a year later because she had hijacked an agenda item that wasn't about the district courts destroying child abuse evidence. The reason agendas are posted is so that we, the public, can come and talk, and when public comments is out of order, when agenda items are hijacked, we who are survivors of the hijacked agenda item never know about it. So, in Marcia Burke Bigler's case, it's been, it's been a year where that child could have gone into a court, gotten an injunction. So, this is a kind of evidence that is being destroyed, and we are holding the council culpable under the Nevada Supreme Court ruling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Patrick Cachell, come on down. How are you, Pat? Welcome. You have three minutes, Pat. Okay?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I figure I'm spending your money at the CAC, at the Community Assistance Center, at the homeless shelter. I should probably come and give you an update on where we're spending your money. And so, and I appreciate that you guys have added in this year to the additional funding. So, but anyway, since we've, everything took place, since we started implementing, we started implementing housing and employment classes during the day, and since then, we've successfully employed over 33 clients and housed 47 into their own affordable housing since January 1. During the recent floods, which I want to say thank you again, I think it was amazing how all the organizations came together in the cities and the states, or the cities and the counties all came together and we all worked together to get the people off the rivers. But we served an additional 103 clients who came off the streets into a safe haven. We turned our storage facility into a temporary shelter for four weeks. During this time, we housed 17 people and employed 10 who did not have to return back to the overpasses or the river. Here shortly, we'll have an additional 54 beds in our overflow shelter, so we'll go from housing 97 up to about 150 people, so we'll be able to accommodate double the amount of people, which will help us also with the people on the river. And then we'll be sending outreach teams to help them get into the overflow shelter. We have hired an overflow case manager who is the entry coordinator into the shelters. This case manager will use diversion techniques to hopefully redirect the other clients to others, redirect the clients to other resources. If the clients, if they need to enter, the case manager will work with the client on housing, employment, alcohol and drug treatment, and mental health services. And then in June, we plan on holding a fairly large housing and job fair on the campus, and we're hoping to get as many as 75 providers to assist the homeless in obtaining all services. We've also been working with our employees. You know, we run a fairly large organization over there, and so recently, we held a three-day safety training and how to de-escalate and elevate the elevated clients. This training proved to be beneficial. We have already seen changes in how the staff works with our clients on a day-to-day basis. And then recently, I'm sure everyone's heard about the Reno Works program. We just launched our sixth session today, actually, of the new Reno, or the existing Reno Works program, so, and we're looking at working with some of the courts, so I'd like to come out here to Sparks and actually work some of the courts out here. We're going to work with Judge Holmes with the drug and alcohol courts to get some of her clients into the Reno Works program as well, so. So, those are just a few of the important things that have happened since January 1. And I just, I feel like I need to come out here, and I'm trying to start going to the city council meetings and also the county commissioner meetings, just to update you guys on just what's going on and how we're saying, you know, spending your money, actually. So, I hope you guys appreciate that, and if you guys have any questions or anything, one thing I do want to do is invite all you guys down to the campus to take a tour and come down there and see what we do firsthand, so it's pretty life-changing, so.
Down today, maybe quarterly, on these updates?
Yeah, no, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Angela Hamler from 39 North, come on down, Angela. Welcome.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So, 39 North has chosen to kind of keep you updated as well as with what we're doing. This is the second time we've done it. So, this is more focused on the special events. We have Marketplace coming up. We have five sponsors, and we started a marketing campaign with a two-sided card that will have the Lavender Fest on it as well as the Marketplace one. Thick cards, they're going to go in a lot of the restaurants in their checkbooks and just at racks at tourism places. The Sierra Nevada Lavender and Honey Festival is brand-new this year. In three weeks, on Facebook, we have over 7,000 interested clicks, which is pretty incredible. So, we're anticipating that that event is going to be good, mostly too, because there's so many people that we're seeing that are coming from over the hill. So, we're working with The Nugget. They're going to be our hotel partner to get room codes for that, so we're excited about that. Engine 39, so far to date, we have raised $10,481. It has been seen at the parade at the North Pole Village, at the Ugly Sweater Crawl, and most recently at the Shamrock Shuffle. The next event is at the Playhouse Builders at Habitat for Humanity. So, we're looking to book that quite a bit this summer, which will be good. As soon as we raise money to pay off the train completely, we have a quote for $3,000 to get the gaboose that will have a wheelchair ramp, so that wheelchair can fit in there locked down along with the passengers, so we're really excited about that piece of item that will attach to Engine 39. We are, our next open public meeting is April 11th at Locatile Group. 5:30 to 6 is networking, 6 to 7 is the meeting, so obviously, you're all welcome to attend. We also are looking for a grant writer. That's something new that we're going to add to our team. So, basically, that's it? That's all we got?
The engine was $25,000.
It was 25,000.
You raised $10,000.
$10,481, yes.
About two or three million people watching this, if you want.
Yes. They could send the donation to, they can go to our website at www.39northdowntown.com. We are also on the giving trail, too, which is kind of like a GoFundMe, but it's a little bit more beneficial for a nonprofit like us. So, yes, thank you.
Good stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak during the public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Approval of the agenda? Anybody want to pull anything, change it? Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the agenda.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Number seven, announcement, presentation, recognition items, and items of special interest. The first, we have a proclamation for Nevada Moves Week. MJ Cloud is usually here to accept it. She's not here today. We gave it to her this morning because she had a conflict. She's doing a TV interview, so I'm going to read the proclamation real quick. Whereas walking and bicycling to school reduces the number of vehicle trips near schools and potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians or bicyclists, and whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption near schools, and whereas the benefits related to physical activity at an early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among children, and whereas children getting advice, I'm sorry, getting active by walking and bicycling to school together with parents and caregivers opens opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian and bicycle safety and its benefits related to health and the environment, and whereas walking and bicycling to school offers an opportunity to build physical activity into both parents' and children's daily routines, and whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Nevada are joining together to get active and promote walking and bicycling to school. Now, therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 13th through 17th, 2017, as Nevada Moves Week. In Nevada, and encourages citizens across the City of Sparks to walk, bike, or participate in an athletic event with their children while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health this week and throughout the year. So, thank you, and MJ's usually here all the time, but she had a conflict. Okay, we'll move on to World Down Syndrome Day. Is there somebody here? Come on down. You want to read this? And just give us your name for the record in a moment.
Megan Finelli.
Welcome, Megan.
Thank you.
We're going to read the proclamation.
Okay. Whereas promoting safe and healthy communities in Nevada involves supporting initiatives that raise awareness about disabilities and harmful conditions, as well as educational opportunities regarding treatment for prevention of and research into those conditions, and whereas Down Syndrome is a genetic condition that occurs in approximately one in every 800 births, and whereas there are more than 400,000 people of various ethnic, religious, and socioeconomic groups with Down Syndrome living in the United States, and whereas life expectancy for people with Down Syndrome has increased from 25 years of age in 1983 to 60 years of age and older today, and whereas early intervention, appropriate speech, physical and occupational therapies, vocational training, and post-secondary education opportunities enable people with Down Syndrome to prepare for gainful employment and independent living, and whereas the City of Sparks joins communities across the nation recognizing March 21st, 2017, as the 12th anniversary of World Down Syndrome Day, with continued commitment to celebrating and recognizing the talents, potential, contributions, and achievements of those living with Down Syndrome. Now, therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, proclaims March 21st, 2017, as World Down Syndrome Day.
Well, we would like to thank you guys for taking the time to do this for us. Our organization's been working really hard to reach out to the community. We're currently in the process of kind of revamping and really kind of touching some of the community that we haven't really gotten to before, so this means a lot to us, and we really do appreciate you guys taking the time to put this together for us, so, thank you.
Everything you guys do, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, have a great day. (applause)
Okay, 7.3, presentation on how Reno Sparks Northern Nevada Chamber membership provides value. Welcome, Ann, how are you?
Mayor Protem, members of the Sparks City Council, thanks for just a moment of your time. I'm the new CEO of the Reno Sparks Northern Nevada Chamber. You may have been aware that for some time, we've been called "The Chamber." We'd however like to put the Spark back in the name, and you will see a new logo and a revamping of that returning to the Reno Sparks Northern Nevada Chamber. I think I've put a new logo in your packet just for you to see. We're still working on it, but Reno Sparks will definitely be joined together. We've also worked very hard to create a member value proposition to introduce and reintroduce many of our members to the importance of belonging to the Reno Sparks Northern Nevada Chamber. We hope that you will continue to encourage your business community members to join the chamber. We think it's important. Really, there are three pillars on which we're basing our efforts. One is on advocacy and the fact that businesses together have a great deal of leverage and a large voice when speaking to decision-makers at both the city and state, county, federal level, and we know that certainly from the standpoint of our, excuse me, of our membership, we know that information and education exchange is critical. It's not only, not always about supporting one position versus another, but making sure that people know all the facts, that their decisions are data-driven, and they have an opportunity to hear every side of a particular issue. And lastly, we know that connectivity, which we're using to replace the word that's most often used, networking, we think that connectivity among the 1,600 members, their opportunities to meet with one another, to be informed of each other's consumer base is vitally important to keeping businesses strong and stable here in the Reno Sparks communities. So, thank you for your time and support for the chamber.
Ms. Bybee?
Ann, thank you for coming today, and I'm especially appreciative of adding Sparks back to Reno Sparks Chamber, because we are an integral part of this, of Northern Nevada, and appreciate that and look forward to working with you. We're on the EDOM Board together, but I think as a community, and there's so many businesses that are, that have business in Reno and Sparks.
Absolutely.
And within Northern Nevada, a lot of times, companies anymore are not just located in one of our jurisdictions, so I appreciate that and your movement forward, and thank you.
You know, and I appreciate it, too, because Sparks always, when they go to the final editing, it always seems to get kicked out. They did that with the Reno Tahoe International Airport, several years ago, so maybe you got some influence with them, and we can change the name of the airport.
We can try.
Just asking, just saying.
On our board, yes, let's see what we can do.
And the Nevada Veterans Memorial just joined the chamber. We figured it was time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ann. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, how about the 7.4 presentation, Truckee River Flood Project Update? Greg and Jake, come on up. I know you're not shy, you can come up.
No, he's fine. We have a, we have a.
Okay. Welcome, Jake.
Come on, there we go, I think that's it. And indeed, Mr. Protem and members of the Sparks City Council, it's an honor to be here. I like to come and update this council along with our other member entities on a frequent basis. You recall last January, I said we might start looking out for some storm events coming up, and interestingly enough, we got a little bit of a storm. It was a little bit of a storm, but it wasn't a large one. I'm trying to do the best I can to show that we have a number of significant storms that hit us. This is a return frequency versus the year, so if you see we're 100-year, that would be a 100-year storm event. You see the 50-year that's dashed, that's the 50-year storm event. Since we've been keeping records, and this is in the Reno Gauge, which is immediately upstream of 395 Bridge or 580 Bridge, you notice that there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 very significant storm events that we have had since we've been keeping records. It glosses over our emergency planning storm, that's 1862, wherein they had two back-to-back storms of 100 years or greater within a 10 to 20-day period. So, you think about what we got this year, which was only a 40-year event, it certainly wasn't a big rain. I don't consider a big rain until it gets above a 50-year event, and maybe because I'm looking at major facilities rather than just nuisance water. What we did get, though, is we got a lot of storms, and if we had have taken all that water and plugged it into one storm event, we could have been easily washed away with that one event, had it occurred. The other thing that's in this, is you notice the 1997 event is well above the 100-year. That is the largest storm of record, not the largest storm that's ever hit this area. And you notice the 1986 storm, it looks kind of funny. It's broken in the middle, it's got two halves. According to the Reno Gauge in 86, that was only a 50-year event, but what happened is the water accumulated in North Sparks, and it completely wiped out the North Truckee Drain, and by the time it got to Vista, it was known to have been a 100-year event and the second-largest storm of record. So, we can get inundated by a number of different kinds of storm events. It is a common theme for this community to get pulverized by significant amounts of water, and that is what the take-home message is with this slide. In 1955, that was another 100-year event. You see the Mapes down there, this is the Virginia Street Bridge Riverside. There is 1986 looking towards Mount Rose from across the Dairy Island. In 97, you see the whole commercial area of Sparks completely inundated. Although we got some inundation in this, in the 2017 event, it wasn't anywhere near like this. Hidden Valley, there's the Demming area of Sparks commercial area. It did get wet. One of the things that we have been able to do as an agency is we have developed what we think is a very accurate two-dimensional model of the floodplain from Reno all the way down to Vista. The thing that makes this important is that it shows, well, like if, and I didn't point this out, but it shows the airport lanes as open, but it also shows the airport building terminal as getting inundated. We were able to take some significant measurements, and as we checked the measurements versus the plot of this 100-year plan, it shows that we're very accurate in what we know. Given the fact that the precipitation can change so drastically, this particular 100-year storm is a fictitious storm. The good thing about it is we can plug other storms in this and try to determine what happens. You notice downtown, you have an escape route that goes almost directly to the airport, whereas you have water staying in the river channel, and it floods the airport, so the airport is flooded by two features. The thing that was good about this, as we were planning for the 2017 event, we noticed we had something that we probably could give to, and why is this showing up? I thought we had, okay, I'm going to back, I'm going to go to there first. We thought we had a fairly accurate model, so what we did is we took the, we took the model information from the Weather Service on how much rain was supposed to come down, and we plugged it into our model, and we got some very good inundation maps. In fact, your own Neil Crutch was a commenter on that and asked us to give more shaded areas so that we could determine the actual depths. The comments that I got in passing from the fire and from the police agencies as they were using these maps was, "This is an excellent tool," and they were very happy. We also, well, we didn't show, I always like to say where we're good and where we're bad. In downtown Reno, we showed that the water was going to go over the levee, and it didn't. So, I apologize for that, but the police and fire guys said, "No, no, we were appreciative to even be privy to this information because it helps us in our response." Let's back up to the other elements that we actually do and what makes this authority work. It is an inter-local agreement formed by Reno Sparks and Washoe County governments. We have a six-member board. The thing about that board, it's not odd, as you might see from the standpoint of odd number, all decisions have to be unanimous, which makes it kind of interesting in following Robert's rules when you're trying to decide who is the victor in a particular vote. We are, sales tax is what funds our agency. We get half of the one-quarter cent passed by the Washoe County Commission, passed in '98. We yield about $8 million in total, and we get about $5.5 to $6 million in net proceeds after we pay for the debt service for the two Dandini facilities that we built out of this as well. The flood project, or flood authority, did not build those buildings, they were built by Washoe County, the regional training facility and the EOC. Okay, what have we done? Okay, what have we done since we have been an agency? Well, we've supported the construction of the Virginia Street Bridge. We supported the construction of the Indian Colony Flood Wall around the new Walmart there at Glendale. We built, or actually, we studied Hidden Valley, looking for a way to fix that. As it turns out, the recommendation was to elevate the homes and not build another $50 million feature, saving us some money. We built a number of restoration projects in, in cooperation with Nevada Land Conservancy, and, and we are, you know, very appreciative to our partners that have helped us with that. We only spent $6.5 million at that. And we also supported the construction of the North Truckee Drain, and the City of Sparks is well aware of, of its almost completion. It would have been nice to have it operational at the time of the flood event, but I don't believe that it would have made a lot of difference, and I certainly have no problem in going on record saying that, that, that that delay probably didn't cause anybody else to flood, or to a greater extent. And then we purchased a lot of property at the height of the market, but you know, if we hadn't have done that, that property would be developed today, it'd probably cost us twice as much than the 48 million that we spent. What else do we do? We operate and maintain the flood warning system. We also, there's a USGS contract that we, that we work with on that, and of course, in the 19, or the 2017 flood, we were able to provide significant information, and it really, it came out really well from that standpoint. Talked a little bit about that. What is our project? Without going into any great detail on the project, our project is a 100-year plan. The federal government gave us and offered us a 50-year plan. We were able to support the Corps and get that authorized, so that's an authorized plan, and it means money back to this community. We simultaneously planned a 100-year project under the Board direction, and that project is planned and designed and ready to go. We have now turned that plan over to the Corps of Engineers, and they are reviewing it. They have to review it and pronounce it as compliant with their criteria in order for them to continue with that project, and, and putting that in the queue in lieu of the 50-year plan that they've already done. The project started out, actually started out about 100 million, went to 300 million, then ballooned to 1.6 billion, and through planning, that 100-year plan got down to about 400 million. So, we've, we've significantly lowered it. I am joined today by Mr. Greg Ferraro, who is one of, is one of our lobbyists, and the lobbyist that's helping us with the state work that we're doing, and is telling me that we need to go lower than that. I don't know if we're going to meet in a dark alley and try to haggle that out, but that's where we are now. We have significantly reduced the project down to 400 million. The federal government, because they authorized a 50-year plan, what that did is establish a level of funding that they were willing to contribute, that would be up to $180 million. In order for that to occur, two things have to occur. One, we have to negotiate a, a contract with the Corps of Engineers, and we're down the road in doing that. In other words, the first thing in, in doing that negotiation was for the Corps to review our 100-year plan and for them to pronounce it as good. Don't worry, they're going to have 10 pages of comments, maybe even 20 pages of comments, and we're going to have to fix all those, but at the end of the day, we will come away with a plan that meets their criteria. And then, we're going to have to show and demonstrate to the federal government that we have the ability to raise, and in this case, our $220 million. 400 minus 180 is 220, that's where that number came from. So, we're going to have to prove to the federal government that we have that ability. The authority has the ability to raise a fee, they rejected the idea because of the damage it would do probably to the commercial areas, and we didn't want that. So, we are looking for another possibility. The thing that's very important is that last bullet that says, "Our federal funding will be lost," and that is the fact that the way that they are funding WERDA bills, and the WERDA is the bill, the federal bill that passed and authorized our project, is that if you don't get any money by seven, maybe eight, maybe six years, and it's, and it's a very type of thing, that if you don't get any money, then the federal government will de-authorize that project, shoot it out the, put it, you know, put it out the door, and we will not get that $180 million that's associated with our project. Very important that we, we keep that in mind. The Turfma Direct Benefit Fee, they have, the, the Board has opined and approved the, the concept of approving a direct benefit fee. These are for individuals such as the commercial area that no longer will flood after we build our project. For planning purposes, the Board said, "Let's make it about eight bucks per thousand square foot, feet of developed space, or .8 cent per square foot." Although that is, represents a significant, a significant amount of money to a lot of the operators, they've all said, that we've spoken to, that they could deal with that, that number. It is a, it is a workable number. Given the, the problem with that is only, it only produces about $2.5 million, maybe $3 million a year, and from what our direct benefit shows to be right now, and I, I've got a slide that'll show that, it's probably closer to $2.5, maybe even a little bit less. So, if we're going to build a $400 million project, we're currently getting about $5 million, we add $2.5 more million, we're not there yet. We need $25 to $30 million to, to build this project. In order to do so, we have to have another funding source. The Board deliberated and asked staff to look at options. We looked at several options, revenue, our revenue coming from a sales tax, coming from a property tax, government service tax, and several others. And the Board at that time, this is back in 2016, prior to the election of 2016, they elected to not seek a tax at that time in order to allow the school funding process to go forward and, and either be accepted or rejected by the voters, and the voters accepted that, that tax, and, and so now we are looking at another tax. The financial responsible, or the, the goal is to build this project as soon as possible. That's probably in the 10 to 15-year range. Given the fact that it'll take us five years to get permits, given the fact that it'll take 10 to 12 years to build all the project elements, and given the fact that nothing ever works out the way that, that the engineers plan it, I still use that as a, as a concept for as fast as we possibly could build it. Given that, that that's the case, we probably won't build the project and get it completed until 2032, assuming a 12-year build-out starting in 2020. There is, there are, there are options that can be looked at. We have to balance affordability with the duration of contract. Obviously, if we were to do a pay-as-you-go at $5 million a year, we could eventually build the project, but none of us would be around to benefit from it, and, and it is not the goal of this, of this authority to do that. We're trying to take advantage of the federal funds, and we won't be able to use them unless we can raise the revenue that we need. So, with that, the Board, the Board hired the Ferraro Group, and we devised a strategy, and we have put this before the Board, and the Board has approved and concept this strategy. So, we will go before the state legislature, and for that, I'm going to ask Greg to come up and just finalize that, and I'll just operate it, Greg, if you'd like to go ahead and talk to it.
Yeah, sure.
I got it, yeah. It's automatic on.
The light is, the light is off.
At the legislature, you have to push it. Isn't it nice to be here and not there? Mayor Protam, Greg Ferraro today appearing on behalf of the Truckee River Flood Management Authority. Just very briefly, as Jay indicated, we were retained to help identify possible solutions, both, both political and otherwise. So, so after a number of, of meetings, we proposed that the best thing to do in this political environment was to borrow a, a very successful process, which was to create a committee similar to the WC1 Committee, which was SB 411, which Senator Debbie Smith had championed and was approved. And, and that legislation, as it related to school construction, assembled various community leaders, and they spent a year and a half looking at the issue of school construction in Washoe County, and they looked at it every possible angle, and they probed and they tested, and they decided what they wanted to put on the ballot. That legislation said very directly that that committee had the authority to place the question before the voters in 2016. So, we, we said, "Well, why don't, why don't we follow the same path? Why don't we create, why don't we ask for legislation that creates a committee that might be comprised a little bit differently because of interests may, may vary for flood control?" And we went to brief the Washoe delegation, all the members in the legislature representing Washoe County. We proposed the idea to them, and they all to a person said they did not object to that. And so, Assemblyman Mike Sprinkle agreed to have the legislation drafted. We're in the process of waiting for the legislation to come out of the bill drafters at LCB, but the, the intent is for it to be substantially similar to the legislation that created the WC1 Committee that had the authority to place a question on the ballot. This legislation, which we still don't have a bill number yet because it's not out of drafting, will say that that committee has similar authority to place a question on the 2018 ballot. It also will have the ability to look at what Jay and his team have put together, what the Board has, has, has put forward, and then they'll have the authority to decide what, what it is and how it should be funded, how big it should be or how small it should be, and they have the sole authority to place that before the voters. I look at this really in three phases. The first phase is to get the legislation to the Governor's desk so that he can sign it and the committee can be formed. The second phase is the work of the committee, which will take at least a year and a half. And the third phase is the work that will go into educating and informing Washoe County voters as to what it is and what it isn't, and the, and the campaign that will flow out of that. We're in the first phase. I feel very comfortable, today at least, representing to you, that we're not, and we're not seeing any or identifying any serious opposition to this proposal. That doesn't mean that we won't run into some turbulence along the way. We have to follow, like every other piece of legislation, we have to pass committees and pass each House and work through that very public process. But I feel very good that there's an awareness now, more so now than ever, that we have a, we have a flood issue in our community. And I think we're probably going to have a, a wet spring, and it may even manifest itself in, in more flooding. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that proposal. I think it's, I think it's comfortable for most people who were familiar with how the WC1 Committee worked, and I, I think it's the, really the best way to create community awareness and community consensus on an issue that is pretty darn important, and you've got $180 million of federal funds hanging in the balance. So, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Questions or comments? Ms. Wybe?
Greg, I'm, I'm real familiar because I did help work on the, the Washoe, SOS Washoe. Are you envisioning, once you get the committee, that, that puts together whatever will be on the ballot, and when you move to the education piece of hiring a marketing firm, doing that same model that, that Washoe SOS did?
I, I think so. I think that would be the, that would be the smartest thing to do, and that, that committee would then probably look at different RFPs and decide how it wanted to proceed, since that would be, for the most part, a private sector committee.
Mr. Derrick?
I just want to voice a valuable, I think this is, and how important it is. Obviously, we saw the emergencies happen. It's something that I think over the years I've been here, I just get to watch, and we just, we had a drought, but beyond that, we just wait for floods. And so, if our constituents are listening to this out there, and I know they are, hopefully they, they watch, we want to make sure that, especially Sparks, we're kind of at the bottom of that bathtub, it would almost fill, but it's something that we want to make sure we support to the best of our ability and help get out there.
I, I will say to that, if I may, Greg Ferraro, for the record, I have spent a little bit of extra time with Senator Ratty, and I, I think that she's representative of that viewpoint.
Mr. Lawson?
So, what happens if the voters say no? What happens to the flood management board?
Yeah, I'm going to have to take that one. There's a...
Phil, that's going to be one of the questions.
There are a number, there are a number of issues that we would have to put out for consideration by the Board. The, the large project, as it is now envisioned, may not get built. It is, it is, we need $400 million to build this project. If we lose the $180 million, and, and, and at this point in time, I don't know if I want to get into the weeds, the $180 million will come from the federal government, but it won't probably come in time for us to build the whole project. Therefore, we will, we will most likely have to raise our full $400 million and then be reimbursed by the federal government. That is being done by several projects in the West right now, so it's a, a model that will work. If we don't build the project this time, we lose the automatic repayment or $180 million draw, that, that goes away. If the community can afford to build it or re-question, re, repackage it in some form or fashion over the next 10 years, perhaps we can build chunks of it. There, there are portions of the project that could be downsized, if you will, but that would all have to be done under the guise of, of a, of a flood authority, the Board, and how they wanted us to proceed. There are ways that we could do different things. I mean, there's, there's possibilities, but you won't see the big project. You won't see all of the Sparks in the Reno area, the airport, taken out of the floodplain. You may see small portions of it.
I'm going to wish you luck, but you're going to have an uphill battle for sure, you know? Now, we're talking about laying off teachers because we have a $30 million shortfall, and we just gave the school board $700 million. This is a tough road to hoe, especially if you don't live anywhere near the river and you don't experience flooding. It's easy to say, "It's not my backyard," so I'm not going to worry about it, and I'm not going to pay for it.
That is certainly the case. At the end of the day, you have my commitment, and I think most of you know how diligent I have been in trying to make sure that we have a viable project, it's served up to the voters in a way that they can understand it. You have my commitment to do everything I possibly can to do that.
Well, I, I don't disagree. We, we need a flood project, Sparks needs a flood project. It, it's something that should happen, but I know it's going to be a tough road to hoe.
If it was easy, we'd have it built already.
That's true.
Yeah, I might add, Councilman Lawson, that that's, your, your comments are not, are not new. I mean, many legislators have expressed the same opinion. It is, it is an uphill climb, but I think once people become more aware of what the long-term economic benefits are of having flood control in place, it starts to connect people that don't immediately experience a Truckee River flooding, and it lets everybody realize it is a community-wide challenge.
Strategy?
Yeah, only $8 on property tax?
That's on, that is on property tax, right? The $8 per thousand?
That is, that is a direct benefit fee, it is not a tax. Therefore, how we collect it, we, the Board has not decided, there's been several proposals. We thought we might try to use the tax bill from the county tax assessor, but at this point in time, that's not approved. That will require legislation that can be done in 2019 if we need to. The other option is the, the Tamwa model, they actually, Bill, or actually have a consultant collect all the money and, and then turn all that money back over to them. It costs them about $1 million a year for their, for their collection contract. If we were to collect it through the county, we could probably do it for, I'm sure, less than $500,000, probably even less than $250,000 because the, the small amount of accounts that would have to be collected. As compared to a full county-wide selection of accounts, that's close to $200,000. that's close to 200,000 accounts, and then that becomes very expensive. The direct benefit is more like 3,000 to 5,000 accounts, a lot smaller.
One quick question, too. So with this, is there a sunset that will be on this? So will there be an end to this? Because obviously, it's more of a loan. We're not trying to just up it, or what is your thoughts on that?
Well, I think the committee will make the decision, and it would be bonded money. So the committee would be charged with deciding how to structure the financing.
I would advocate, as staff, I have been, in my conversations with people, I advocate for a sunset because we can live with the 1/8 cent that we currently have, and that'll serve for maintenance and ongoing money. This money would then, once the project is built, they would then decide to either apply it to some other for some other thing, or else sunset the tax.
Okay, I'll just say a few comments. I've been on the flood project since 2006. The flood authority actually has the ability to put fees in place. We can do that, but there's no political will. It's obvious there's no political will do that. And the fees that came before was very expensive, just under $30 per household. And that's why there's no political will to do that. So the committee, to me, is the best idea. Let them come up with a way to fund this thing. If it doesn't pass, the flood project, as we know it, is dead. We still have the authority. We still have the ability to put fees in place, so it might trigger something else. And there's other areas that we have to talk about. This is a regional issue. And to Councilman Lawson's comments, you're right because Incline Village will be voting on this. And they don't get affected by the flood unless we flood, and they can't get to the airport or anything else. But everybody's affected by the flood in one way or the other. So if there are no more questions?
I just have, I was going to ask Mayor Protemp, if I could. It would be very helpful to the legislative process and those of us that are trying to advance this legislation if your council were to make an affirmative vote of support in the form of a resolution that could be shared with the legislature. I know you won't take that up today, but at some future time, within the next month or so, I would respectfully request that you at least visit that subject.
Okay, anything else?
Nope. That was the last item, was that last slide.
Thanks for the report. Keep us posted down there, and if you need us down there, of course, we'll be there.
I will. I'll need you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, this is kind of a fun thing we like to do here. Welcome somebody into our family. So we have a new employee here. Started last week, and like Teresa's email, it said she's worked here a week, and she actually showed up today. She came back. So Teresa, why don't you introduce our new employee?
I'd love to. Teresa Gardner, City Clerk, for the record. Your City Clerk's Department has consisted the last four years of myself. We have Donna DeCarlo up there, who has served as our Assistant City Clerk and Records Coordinator. And we have Carrie Brooks as our Records Technician. We got by by having a couple very dedicated volunteers and temp employees at times. So as of last Monday, March 6th, Donna is now focused on being Assistant City Clerk. And I would like to introduce to you Julie Torres. Julie comes to us, she was a court clerk at Lyon County, then did some time in banking, and then, most recently, has been the Deputy City Clerk at the City of Fernley. And so I welcome Julie. I think she's going to be a great asset to our team.
Julie, thanks for coming. And we'll let you have a few words. Okay? Thank you. Tell us about yourself.
So I have been in Fernley for 32 years. We moved out there when I was a kid. And the pit, actually, the Helms Pit actually brought my family to the Sparks area. My grandfather and my father both worked at the Helms Pit, so that's dating us a little bit. Both of my kids are grown. My daughter will be graduating from UNR in May. My son is playing baseball in California at a local college. He will actually go into the draft this year, so we're pretty excited about that. And my husband is retiring after 25 years of law enforcement. So our life is a little bit different, so this is a big challenge for us moving on to something else. I'm super excited, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come here and work with the great people in the City of Sparks.
Happy to have you. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Welcome, thank you. You'll like it here.
I already do.
Okay. We'll move on to consent items. There's one. Anybody want to pull it or looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve Consent Item 8.1.
Mr. Abbott? We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, General Business, 9.1. Review and Discussion of the Draft Capital Improvement Plan. And guess who's going to give this to us? Brian, how are you?
Good. Let me get my stuff out here.
I understand this is about a seven-minute presentation?
Yeah, maybe seven and a half.
Presentation's 85 pages long.
So if anybody needs to go to the restroom or something, I suggest you go now because it's going to be...
I'll keep it as brief as possible. I know, hopefully, you guys have gone through and at least reviewed it, and I'll kind of hit on some of the highlights here and just get through this and hopefully give you the information you'll need to make some decisions. So, good afternoon, Mayor Protemp and City Council members. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. I'm here today to provide you, basically, with an overview of the Fiscal Year 18 Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP for short. The plan doesn't include the next four years also, but my main focus on this presentation's going to be just for this coming fiscal year. With there being two new council members, I'll go into a little bit more detail on just kind of the funding sources and some of the intricacies of each fund to hopefully help you guys understand that a little bit better. So certainly, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask those questions. I do want to say that the CIP is obviously a tremendous challenge, and it takes most of the year to plan for. I'm continuously getting input from other staff members pretty much throughout the year, and it's a very long process to get to where we're at right now. It's something we take great pride in. It's not only what we rely on to ensure our city infrastructure and facilities are kept in the best possible condition, but with the limited budget, it also requires, basically, it also requires that we use the budget available in the most efficient and cost-effective manner, and we try our best to be proactive rather than reactive. I mean, obviously, we've got to take into account all the different measures that limit the budgets and that sort of thing. I also want to mention that it truly is a team effort, and it requires a tremendous amount of planning and forethought, multiple meetings with other departments. So I'm very grateful for all the help that I received from all the other staff members, and I certainly wouldn't be able to do it without them. I did want to mention that I have two other presenters, Steve Davidek, the IT Manager, and Ron Corman, the Public Works Manager. And as I summarize each fund, I'll mention the funding source, how we identify the projects, the total cost anticipated to be used in each fund. And lastly, I'll talk about some of the primary projects that will be completed. And please keep in mind that each funding source is restricted by either NRS, City Ordinance, or federal regulations. So with that said, I'll move right into my presentation. First one I'll discuss today is the Transportation Projects Fund, Fund 1401. The funding source for this fund is through fuel tax and franchise fees. Fuel tax is obviously just a portion of the taxes that come from when you fuel your vehicle up at the gas station. And then franchise fees is through NV Energy and Tamwah. And basically, from Tamwah, this fund gets 60% of those franchise fees that we receive, and the other 40% goes to the general fund. And then from NV Energy, 2/3 of what we receive from them goes towards this fund, and then the other third goes to Fund 1402, which is the Parks Fund. Uh... It very well could be. I know, just in terms of the funds that I manage, there's a portion that goes, that's how it's broken out, is a 2/3 or 1/3. Thank you. So identifying projects, we use the pavement, or Transportation Division uses the pavement management program. They use a pavement quality team, and then also the Transportation Division and roadway inspection consultants. And then they take into account citizen input. Obviously, if somebody calls up and they're having trouble with the road, that's certainly taken into consideration on what projects we plan for the future. Currently, we've got a little over $3.5 million planned within that fund. I want to briefly touch on kind of a very important part of coming up with the projects. The Transportation Division, they use the Pavement Condition Index. I mean, that's a very important part to input into the pavement management program so that they can determine the shape that each of the roadways within the city is and plan for future projects using that. It's rated from 0 to 100. They use a consultant that goes around the city every year and essentially assesses 1/3 of the city roads. So it's on like basically a three-year rolling process to go throughout the whole city, and they just keep doing that year after year. And they go through and basically give each roadway a range. So the Pavement Condition Index range from 0 to 50 is basically the road's in pretty bad shape, and it needs a full rehab, which is reconstruction of the roadway section. And then from 51 to 69, corrective maintenance, which is crack seal, less than 25% patching, a mill, and an overlay. And then range of 70 to 100, this is a very important one. Basically, that's where we look at doing a preventative maintenance program, which is ultimately slurry seal and minor patching. But this preventative maintenance program is much less expensive than the other items. And ultimately, I mean, it'll give us up to or above seven years more higher lifespan on the road, which is a great use of the funding. And then, if you look at this, the graph there, that's basically showing the history of what the average PCI rating has been throughout the city, going back to about 2005. The Transportation Division's done a great job of getting that PCI and working on the roadways and increasing the PCI over the years. It's leveled off a little bit over the last four or five years, but ultimately, they're doing their best with what they have to try and improve that number. And in the next slide, you'll see this kind of shows it's broken out into five different areas. Ultimately, the older area, Area 1, that's the older area of Sparks, so the PCI is a little bit lower there. The roads are older. There's a lot more rehab projects going on in that area or that we need to plan for the future for that area to up those numbers. Then you have Area 5, that's a 91. Obviously, that's a much newer area, and we're working on doing more preventative maintenance in that area. Got planned about $2 million for rehab this coming fiscal year. I've shown the roadways on here that they're going to focus on. There's two units. This first unit, I'm going to go to the next map on the next page, basically outlines those areas. They try and plan these as best as possible in as small of an area as possible so they can get the best bang for their buck with the contractor, and they're not closing a road over here and a little road over here. They kind of consolidate it and try and pick the best areas that make the most sense. And each year, it's not necessarily just two units like we have this year. It may be three units. It depends on the funding. It depends on the areas. It depends on a lot of different items going on to make that decision. And so this particular area, Unit 1, is near Mendive Middle School over just west of Vista Boulevard and just northeast of Sparks Boulevard. And then Unit 2, I've got the roads listed, if you'd like to go through them on your own. But I've got a map here showing, essentially, it's just northwest of the Pyramid McCarron Intersection Project. So they're going to work on most of the roads in that area, just southeast of Weddington Road. Moving into the preventative maintenance project, these roads are spread out throughout the city, but they've chosen roads that are in good enough shape, obviously, according to the PCI rating from 70 to 100, that it makes the most sense to do a slurry seal. And this is just a rotating basis every year, trying to get as many roads as they can done, and it really helps extend the life of the roadways. I've got some annual projects shown in there that maintenance uses to keep up on such things as potholes and that sort of thing, which we're going to have probably a lot more this year than we have in the past because of the weather. So that crack sealing number, they may end up using, having to use a little bit more than that in the future. I don't know. Only time will tell. We've got sidewalk rehab, alley parking lot and pathway projects, and then, of course, pavement management program support for basically having the consultant do those, part of having the consultant do those assessments on the roadways. This is just that same map that I showed you earlier, just showing the areas that the slurry seal projects are broken up into five different areas. And so the first area, Area 1, is up there north of Interstate 80 and up to around Wild Creek Golf Course and just various roads throughout that jurisdiction or that area. And then Area 2 is over just west of Sparks Boulevard. We do have, the blue roads are the ones that are planned for the base bid that they're planning on doing the projects for. The yellow or kind of yellowish color that's shown there, that's an option. I mean, the prices can vary, and if they come in and they get some good prices on slurry seals, then they'll have that option in the bid. And if they're able to get that, they'll get the best bang for their buck on that. Out...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can sort of see a lot of that in there more. What happens in the case like Tamwah comes in and they dig a big hole? They patched it back, and they've made the world's largest speed hump on Probasko now.
Yeah, well, we...
They come back and finish that off and make it travelable? Or is that as good as it gets? Because they did the same thing in my cul-de-sac.
I think John would be better suited to answer that question.
John Erickson, City Engineer, for the record. That is a temporary patch on Probasko right now, and so we will go back in and patch it with a permanent patch. So we'll do that this spring. Go ahead. You're welcome.
Way and Vista Boulevard area, we've got another section that we're working on. And there's one road up there by Golden Eagle Regional Park, up in the corner of that slide, that they're going to be working on that roadway there, too. And then adding a second option in for Area 5 up in Winkfield Springs near Van Gorder Elementary School. Right there, where Vista Boulevard curves around and turns into Campello Drive. And then, this is just some more annual programs that are scheduled that they need for maintaining the roads and doing certain items such as safe route to schools and signal coordination, traffic calming enhancements, and various items throughout the city.
And I have a question. On all of your, the road projects right now, and you mentioned briefly the weather. With the weather just taking its toll on all of our roads, do you, will this be enough money to do the work that you need to do? Or will you get in there and think it was preventative, and all of a sudden, it's a rehab project? And how do we, John's coming in. How do we account for...
We figured this would be coming.
Potholes and like major road damage? And how will that affect our budget? Do we have money budgeted that we're going to be able to do the work we need to do?
John Erickson, City Engineer, for the record. What we're going to, you'll be seeing an item coming at your next council meeting. It's a patching contract for the FY '18, or ahead of the FY '18 Preventative Maintenance, where we've added additional quantity to that contract so that, once the weather subsides and we start getting in and doing the patching, we'll have additional quantity in that contract to help out our maintenance folks. So we are being proactive with the potholing. Okay.
On the PCI area, does that, I can see that a lot on the map?
I don't have my street name. Can I see what my number is?
John Erickson, City Engineer, for the record. We're working with our GIS folks, and that we will have that application. I'm hopeful to have that within the year.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. All right. So we'll move on to, unless there's any other questions, we'll move on to the Capital Projects Fund, Fund 1404. This fund, currently, we've got $462,000. That's going to be transferred over through a general fund transfer. This number was lowered this year because of some budget items going on, and typically, it's about 2.5% of the general fund. it's about 2.5% of the general fund and would be up there in the $1.6 million range. Project identification through engineering and maintenance staff, council, departments, and citizen concerns. And then we prioritize projects in Fund 1404 according to things such as structural integrity and life safety, mechanical and electrical projects to keep the buildings up and running and comfortable, accessibility issues, grant matching projects, along with down towards the bottom, functional remodels, and just comfort and upgrade remodels. There's about $845,000 worth of projects planned in that fund, which does include the annual projects that we have in there. I'll just briefly go through some of the projects. We've got a City Hall carpet replacement project over here in the community services wing that we're going to work on. We've been going through City Hall, trying to slowly get all the areas re-carpeted because the carpet's getting in pretty rough shape. Police Department, we've got a fire alarm that they would like to add to their, basically their maintenance building that's out on the south side of the main building out in the parking lot, along with a 50 amp service upgrade so that they can plug in their larger vehicles in there and keep them charged and running properly. And then we've got basement carpet replacement at the police department also. That should be the last phase for that. They've re-carpeted the rest of the building and that's the last part we've got to take care of. And then here in this building, also at City Hall, trying to go through and upgrade the bathrooms and make sure they're ADA accessible and appropriate for the uses that we have around here at City Hall. So we're going to be hopefully looking at redoing this restroom here in this building this coming fiscal year. And then we have some projects here. I'm just going to note that we did have to move out because of the budget constraints that occurred this year. City Hall West Parking Lot Rehab Project, we are going to still hopefully be able to do that, but we're going to use Fund 1401 to handle that project. And then we had planned on doing the Police Department HVAC System Boiler and Chiller Replacement Project. We're going to move that out a year. Feel like we can hopefully keep those units maintained and try and keep them up to speed for another year and hopefully be able to accomplish that project next year. And then City Hall Legislative Building Chair Replacement, basically replace the chairs that everybody sits in in here. They're, I believe, original chairs and they're getting worn out. And so we were going to try and do that, but we'll push that out another year. And then we've got a, we're going to try and replace the elevator over in City Hall over here in the main area and get it up to ADA standards. It's aging and it's just starting to have a lot of maintenance problems and that sort of thing. And then we have our annual citywide facility improvement fund that's for items that come up throughout the year, like roof leaks and a boiler might go down or that sort of thing. We've got to take care of those major items throughout the year. With that, I'll let Steve Davidek go through the IT Fund in 1404.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council Members. My name is Steve Davidek, IT Manager for the Record. First off, I'd like to thank the support from the City Council that has been given to technology in the city. I've been here 32 and a half years, and over those 32 and a half years, we've really been able to make the city, build a technology infrastructure that we all should be proud of. So first off, I want to talk about funding sources for RIT CIP. So first, we get an annual transfer from the general fund and contributions from other funds to pay for the hardware and software projects we do during the year. The project identification is actually, I'll talk about that a little bit on the next slide, but we actually talk to everybody over the year and over the years, trying to make sure we're looking at the projects that best support the city so that our employees can do the best job supporting the citizens that we are actually working for. Currently, our projects for hardware funded is $238,000. Major systems, we've cut that, as we all know from the budget workshop. We're looking at a lot of projects that we're going to put on hold for another year, but we'll talk about those in a minute. Real quick, I wanted you to know, we do have a plan for everything in the city. If you, we buy a PC every four years for most employees. That's the plan, we try to stick to it. Once we found out that in the past we've let it go longer than that, it becomes a problem for the city. We have thin clients for all the virtual PC users, and that's for people like the fire, every firefighter has their own assigned PC. So no matter where they're working, they can work on their PC at whatever station they're assigned to. We do the engineering PCs a little sooner, mainly because the engineering PCs need more power every year for things like AutoCAD. I don't know what they do, but they create programs that require more. You don't need to know about the rest of it there, it's all listed. So I just appreciate you knowing that we do have a plan, we aren't just arbitrarily going out because somebody wants a PC. This past year, we've done a lot of stuff. Most importantly, we added another 250 terabytes of local storage for all the data that the city seems to require. Every year, we try to add a little bit of data, storage, to make sure we have room for everything, photos for the police department, evidence, et cetera. There's always more required. For this next year, we've got about, we have a plan, we're going to replace about 86 of our 300-plus PCs and notebooks, some tablets, printers, servers, and we're going to upgrade our fiber network, which is our storage network, storage network switches. Major systems, the city of Sparks runs on multiple systems, and I don't want to, we can go into all detail on every one of these, every department has a major support structure that we provide. So this last year, we've spent about $550,000 or will have on just major projects. One of them, I'm going to be bringing to you soon, on the document management system. But we've done a lot of work to make sure that we provide the best technology for the employees and for you. The proposed budget was originally $575,000. We now are down to, we're probably getting about 200, but that's not as heartening a thing from an IT manager's perspective that it was cut. It's more of a, we're putting it off a year to actually allow us to get caught up. And that's probably my biggest thing is, we have nine full-time staff at IT in City Hall, and we have two others that have actually really helped, two others, PD and one at Fire. And between all of us, it would actually be kind of nice to not have another major project, just to get caught up. Acela has been a huge project, in fact, I'll talk about that next. The Acela, one project, huge project, went live finally October 31st. City of Sparks is the only one using the whole online project for all our citizens. They can do everything, any building permit or any business licensing can all be at least started online now. We're the only, of the three entities that are major partners in it, are the only ones using it, so it's really kind of exciting. My staff has done a good job, I think, of getting that project live.
Questions? Why is it we're the only ones using it?
They're all using the project. They're not allowing everybody to do all the permit types online yet. We're the only ones using the online system completely at this point. The staff member I've assigned to it has done a great job of making sure that we're ready and we're going, and the staff supports him citywide to make sure that we can give our business licensing and get our permits done online.
It was a business decision made by each of the four entities, and our council was very clear, and I pushed very hard for us to bring the system up to where that it was as usable internally and externally as possible. So we struggled through, but our philosophy was always bring it all on. And we've suffered a little bit with it. Fortunately, we have a very, very excellent programmer that is helping us doing some of the bug work. But the reality is, our customers are better off than they were even with a program that's struggling than if we hadn't have brought it up. So different agencies made different management decisions with the approval of their elected officials, so we're not here to question that. We were here to satisfy what we told you and what you told us.
And I think what he's trying to say in a nice way is they all started forward and we're way ahead of them.
Yeah.
Does that sum it up?
That would be a fair assessment of my comments, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
In fact, I could say that the staff of the City of Sparks is making sure that the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the Health Department will be successful in the end.
One more work from them than they ever did for us.
The other, an important thing is, we are already working on adding more things to Acela, and hopefully by the July-August timeframe, fire prevention will have been moved over to Acela also. So that's really an exciting thing for my staff. Real quick, we do, all our timekeeping is done online for about 75% of the city employees. Finance is working hard, we're working on a major, our finance is working hard to get us moved to the, everybody moved. There are a lot of problems that go along with going online instead of paper, but we're working on that. We've worked on a lot of projects for our finance department. RecTrack is our online system for registration. We have a update planned, we're on hold waiting for Recreation. We're actually planning on maybe this next year, buying a whole new system. They're doing research right now to make sure Recreation has the right program instead of just upgrading a program we've been running for the last 20 years. So we're working really close with Recreation on that. We have moved every employee now, thank you, Councilman Lawson, to Office 365 in the cloud. We no longer are supporting our email from locally, it's all in the cloud. We did that because it's actually giving us more support from the cloud. You can get to your email faster than you can by having an online internal system. We have to try to support. And we will be moving to Windows 10 desktops next year, but that's only because we can't buy Windows 7 anymore. Did want to real quick point out, it costs a lot of money to have a PC in the city, and that's for our licensing. There, we have, it costs $557.28 to have a PC or a notebook or a virtual user, about $572 a year. It's really important to know that it isn't just, we don't just buy this stuff and we don't just get to use Office, it costs us money. So that's important to know, that's part of, not the CIP, it's part of our regular budget. But it's important to know that we do spend money on every employee to have, make sure they have the tools they need to do their job. We also use, for the Public Works Division, we use the Main Star and the Fleet Management System, continuously working with them to make sure they're supported. We did update the city website as the press release that went out today, we started using it right before Christmas. I'm actually really glad we were able to use it as a flood notification system during the flood. It was very well received. We also upgraded the police website this last year. The police department, I should say, updated their website, which you can see there. So check them out, they're both, I think, pretty exciting things to have. We've upgraded this room a lot, as you know, as part of a major system upgrade, but we've also upgraded the software that runs our agenda system, the new voting system, it works most of the time. I don't mean that in a bad way. We also are streaming in HD, but I won't say that anybody internally to the city can watch it locally except on Facebook. We have a lot of projects planned for next year. Like I said, we know that some of them are going to be put off for a year. We have a 20-year plan, 30-year plan on wanting to replace software, if anybody ever wants to see this, all the details. It's actually a good thing for us to kind of step back. There's still only nine of us in IT at City Hall, trying to get a lot done. And so actually, I'm kind of relieved not to try to throw too many projects in. Some of them, if funding becomes available, will be coming to you saying, hey, can we do this instead? Or, you know, but overall, I think a delay of a year won't hurt the city overall. Last, part of the projects we've done the last couple of years was for the wildly important goal, was sustainability and innovation. So my team has worked very hard to make sure that City Hall is now mobile-enabled, you can take your laptop no matter where you are in the city and work anywhere. In fact, I was thinking of coming outside and working on my laptop in the courtyard today. We've been working closely with the county, Reno, and the Health Department for online access to all the building permit and licensing system. Our public websites are way better than they were a year ago, and we made sure that you guys have the best support we can through our agenda system and also what we're doing technology in this room. So that's it for me. Any questions?
One thing I didn't hear you say was your employees and your staff would, and I think all of us would have, in fact, if we were clearly involved, my office, the problem was not a couple of viruses out there, but your staff is all of itself, and they-
Always come down, you have them working, 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 working down there, but they always take time off. And they're time away from their projects to come down and help my department out. And I just got to tell you how impressed I am with not only your staff, but the way you manage your staff, and you give them the ability to help all of us computer illiterate people to make it through the day. Thank you, Steve.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Continue on here, plowing through these. The next one I want to talk about is Capital Projects Fund 1405. This is one, basically uses that we do that are very similar to 1404. There are some restrictions on what you can use this fund for. It has to be more major projects in order to, it's basically limited by NRS 354, and it's through property tax, and it was a fund that was provided that's very useful for what we do. But it does have the same project identification, the prioritization is the same as 1404, and we try to do as much as we can with the limited budget in this fund. We're going to do projects such as Fire Station Number 1, getting the apparatus bay doors replaced, museum annex building, replacing the roof on that building, on the, that lower building, and then repainting the building, and then also Fire Station 1, upgrading the paging System. And then here's 1402, as I discussed whenever I was talking about 1401. The funding source for this Parks Project Fund is through 1/3 of the electric and gas franchise fees from Envy Energy. Projects are identified through Parks Administration, Maintenance Staff, Engineering, Council, and also citizen input. We have about $850,000 worth of projects planned within this fund. We're looking at basically redoing the south wall at the Marina. It's just getting in really bad shape, the rodents are getting in there, it's really starting to crumble, so we're going to try and do something about that. Larry Johnson, adding some security cameras to the building, just to better protect that facility. And then also Alf Sorensen in the preschool area, in the shower area, in the main lobby area, looking at doing some modifications of the HVAC system to try and improve comfort in that area. And then Golden Eagle Regional Park, multi-use fields, adding or continuing to add a little concrete barrier around the fields to protect them. They did have basically some 3/4 minus rock that surrounded those fields, it was getting on the fields, and it was just causing some problems with that synthetic turf. So we currently have done the majority of it, but we got a little section left that we need to finish up. And then we have some annual projects in the Bike Path Rehab Projects, annual park facility improvements, which is for unforeseen items that come up throughout the year. And then annual sports court rehab for things such as the tennis courts and the basketball courts around town. GIRP, Golden Eagle Regional Park, that is also in 1402, but it's broken out separately so that we can manage that budget individually. The funding source that we have broken out in there is through rental and lease fees collected at Golden Eagle. And then the project identification's the same as I just discussed previously. And we have about $1.7 million worth of projects planned there, and they are primarily through the turf replacement. We had a company, Lloyd Civil and Sports Engineering, provide us an assessment for those fields because the turf is getting past its, up to and past its warranty period of roughly eight years, and it's starting to show some wear. They provided an assessment, they use basically, basically an impact testing that's an industry standard that we do yearly on various areas of the fields. And they're basically just coming to the end of their useful life. So we're going to, we've got a plan going forward, we're going to be looking for direction for funding this and also just providing you with the information you need to make the best decisions you possibly can, replacing those synthetic turf fields. And then we've also got, I kind of skipped ahead, we've got Little League Parking Lot. That one is, basically we have a grant that Washoe County has, is passing through to us that's going to be very useful to be, to add a parking lot just north of the Little League Fields. It's about $300,000, and then there's an additional $100,000 to $150,000 that we'll have to provide for that also, but we don't want to lose that grant funding. And then just annual turf maintenance contract and facility improvements at GIRP. Here's the map of the synthetic turf fields. As they're numbered out there, this coming fiscal year, we were planning on doing 7 and 8 is what the, what we felt was the most appropriate fields to do. And then I've got the other, the plans for future years basically outlined in this, in this map here with Fiscal 19 being Fields 9, 11, 12, and 15, Fiscal 20 being Fields 10, 13, and 14, and Fiscal 21, Fields 1, 4, 5, and 6, and then moving on to- 10, 13, and 14, and fiscal 21, Fields 1, 4, 5, and 6, and then moving on to the Little League fields in fiscal 22. Parks Projects, Park District 1, 2, and 3, the funding source is through NRS 278, through residential construction tax. We have basically project identification that, through Parks Administration, Maintenance Staff, and Engineering, Council, and Citizen Input, and then of course, we have our new parks, trails, and place service improvements that we have to look at to identify projects through that one. We have total between the three districts, $980,000 worth of projects planned. This is just a reminder of where the, how they're broken up. Essentially, Park District 1 is just west of McCarran, up through Sparks Boulevard line, and then east of that is Park District 2, and then up in basically the Wingfield Springs area is Park District 3. Park District 1, we've got a couple of projects planned, we actually have a little more funding than we've had in the past in this, this one, because this is residential construction tax. Park District 1 is in the older area of Sparks, and we don't typically have as much growth there. This year, we have the downtown projects going on, so that's been very helpful. We're looking at doing a couple of park shelters over at Burgess and Imoni Park. Park District 2, we do have a couple of play structures that we're going to be looking at doing in there, and we can, we can identify those. We will identify those here in the coming month or so. Park District 3, annual Park District, we have an annual amount of $25,000 in there, and then we're looking at doing another park, Truth Drive, over in Foothill Number 4. And this is just outlining where the park's at, it's up there just east of Vista Boulevard, up in Wingfield Springs, and then it shows the other parks we've either finished or are looking at doing in the future. Victorian Square Room Tax, this is of course a tax throughout the city that, City of Sparks that can only be spent on Victorian Square redevelopment, that's basically room taxes that are accumulated for this particular fund, Fund 1415. Projects identification is through projects that assist in future development, particularly through capital projects and land acquisition. And currently, we have some different phases set up to update the Victorian Square area in terms of the infrastructure, the sidewalks, the tree planters, that sort of thing. Here's a map basically showing, this year, we've got Phase 1 over there between essential, essentially Pyramid, Pyramid Way and 10th Street, and then this year, we're looking at doing Section 2, which is between 10th and 11th Street. This is just a blow up of Section 2, just to see what we've got there. Yes?
Brian, since we haven't started yet on Phase 1, and we have the funds designated for that in Phase 2, do you envision possibly, and I know Phase 1 was supposed to be built to kind of our test to see if the new favors and what we're doing, will 2 come shortly after, or do we? We won't be doing them together possibly, but because we're, we're starting a little bit later, we do have funds set aside for those first two phases.
Yeah, I'm looking at getting direction. This is our plan that we just felt was appropriate right now, but it certainly can change. We are meeting basically next week to, with stakeholders to basically discuss and let them know what we're planning in Phase 1, and make sure that everybody's on the same page and moving forward to make sure that we can, we can accomplish this and everybody will be, have the same vision or similar vision. And so, we are looking at that, this, this is just our kind of, kind of shot in the dark trying to figure out what makes the most sense, just going from east to west, but we certainly, this may change.
But we do have, the funding that will be, the funding was set aside for 17, which will roll into 18 fiscal year, and then we have the additional funding set aside. So, we have two, two years of room tax dollars we've already pre-designated for those, those phases or for two phases of work that can happen this year.
Phase 1 currently is basically all designed, it's ready to go, we just want to make sure everybody's on the same page and that they understand what we're doing, and make sure that we're, we're doing what, what everybody else has envisioned also. So, that's why we're meeting next week to look at that. Redevelopment Area 1, we do have some funding that has come into this fund, Fund 3401, we have not had funding here in the recent past for this. So, we're looking at, we've got $750,000 earmarked for downtown garage improvements. Since all that development's going on, it's taking up a lot of the parking that's available down there, so we want to make sure that those, the old garage and the newer C Street Garage next to the theater is in the best shape possible. So, we're going to go through and assess that and try and do some work in there. Yeah, yeah, for both of them, we're going to go through and just make sure everything's, yeah, make sure everything's up to, up to date in those, and just do some, do some work in those that's been needed for several years now.
And you spent $400,000, $500,000 on the C Street.
Yeah, the old one next to Great Basin, that was to resurface the, basically resurface the parking area.
Elevator upgrades.
We haven't done elevator upgrades yet, this, that's what we'll be looking at, looking, looking at doing here also, and then working on the stairs on that garage, they're just in, in poor shape, and just making sure everything's safe and looks good, and, and do all the maintenance that we hopefully can have put off for a little while and we can do now. Community Development Block Grant Funding, this is a fund that we've received every year for a lot of years now, it's through the federal government, and very important fund for some of the low-income areas in the City of Sparks. We have typically a five-year plan that we go out and we do two or three blocks of curb gutter and sidewalk and improve some of those areas, and it really, really helps to spruce up the older areas of Sparks. Basically, there's typically around $420,000 worth of projects planned and what we get for reimbursement, and we, there is other reimbursement that comes with that, but it's, it's for other items throughout the city. This is just showing a map of our current five-year plan for the Community Development Block Grant. This coming fiscal year, we're looking at doing between Rock Boulevard and 15th Street and I Street, G Street. And then Municipal Court, they, their funding sources just through their court administrative assessment fees, project identification through judges, municipal court administrator, engineering and maintenance staff. We currently are looking at redoing their, their parking lot, their, their employee parking lot, and then also we have a small amount in there for annual items that may come up throughout the year. Street Cut is $250,000, it's through a fee assessed for construction projects that require cutting into the city streets, and projects identified through any construction project that requires cutting into existing city streets, and it does require a street cut And then lastly, utility projects, basically sewer and storm drain user fees is where the funding source comes for, for this, this fund, we call it the Fund 1600s because there's several pieces to it, there's the sewer, storm drain, effluent, and flood portion of it. It's through connection fees and then also through river flood. Identify projects through sewer and storm drain master plan, video assessments of the infrastructure, environmental, environmental impact to citizens and/or their property, engineering and maintenance staff, along with council, senior staff, and citizen input. Little over $7 million planned within this fund. We've got Tom Wharf Projects that, that's ongoing every year to keep up with all the infrastructure that they have over there, that is, the roughly almost $3 million is actually Spark's share, we, we pay about one-third of the cost, and then Reno pays the other two-thirds. And then El Rancho Sanitary Sewer Reliever Project, we're looking at almost $1.5 million for that project, and that was identified through the sewer model update. And then we have our annual projects, the rehab, rehab, street improvement coordination, and contingency for emergencies. The street improvement coordination is basically for working with, with the Transportation Fund to try and make sure that we're not essentially tearing up a street and then having the utility department come in there two months later and tear up the street again to put in a new pipe, so we make sure we coordinate that appropriately so that we can minimize that from happening. In the storm drain portion of utility, we got Horseman's Park Drainage Improvements, we've had just a rough time keeping basically the water up there, trying to put it in, make it flow appropriately for that area. And then East Prater Way Storm Drain Project for Design, and then we've got our annual, again, street, street improvement coordination, curb gutter and sidewalk projects, emergencies, and then our dam, ditch, flood drainage structures. This is our curb gutter and sidewalk that we have planned for this coming year. As you can see in the kind of yellowish color, that's what we've done over the past years, what's been completed, and now we're, we're looking at doing basically J Street and I Street next, this coming fiscal year, and then we've got our other projects planned for the next three or four years out. Effluent, basically the regional effluent planning and demonstration projects, we've got earmarked $75,000 for that to help improve technology and plan for the future for effluent. And then of course, emergencies and meter side upgrades is included in this fund also. And then last but not least, the Motor Vehicle Fund, I'll let Ron Corman go through this one, and, and we'll finish up here.
Mayor Portman, members of council, Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager. So, I'm going to talk just a little bit about the Motor Vehicle Fund, it's the only capital fund that really is covered under the Public Works area. Funding source, and for those of you that are new to the council, I'll go into that just a little bit. So, basically, the way that the fleet works is the fleet replacement fund, purchase a vehicle for a department, that department pays a fee back to the fleet fund every month, we call it cost recovery, and then with that cost recovery, we also add a little bit of an inflationary portion to that. And so, basically, that citywide is how that fund gets refilled every year. The primary way that projects are identified for replacement during the year are through a committee, the Fleet Committee, and there's members from all city departments sit on that Fleet Committee, and generally, we just meet once each year late in the fall, and we send out an email and say, bring your wish list, and that's kind of where it starts. And then from there, we compare wish list to known data that we have in our fleet management program, and with, you know, cost of maintaining those vehicles and so on and so forth, and with that, then we come up with, with a list of vehicles that need to be replaced, and then we look at how many dollars we have, and then we kind of prioritize, and that's where we come up with that. The fleet fund is divided into two accounts. We have one account that's for our fire apparatus replacement program, and then another account that is just for general fleet vehicles anywhere else in the city. This year, we have identified 1,246,000 roughly of vehicles not fire-related to be replaced. 201,000 of that is for police patrol, 151,000 for police detective, 894,000 for community services or public works vehicles, and of that, 633 are represented, 633,000 is represented by two vehicles. We need to replace one of our storm drain cleaning trucks, and we need to purchase another new sweeper. Also, in the capital project for fleet or motor vehicle fund, we've, we're looking to spend $85,000 to do some electrical upgrades in the city garage, the elect, that's an old building and is falling short on some of the, some of the work that we do in there, so we need to do some upgrades, and it's going to be actually a multi-year project. We're just kind of, we've, we've divided the garage into several sections and, and, you know, we're taking one section at a time. This year, in fiscal 18, we're going to be replacing one additional fire apparatus, one pumper, estimated cost at $613,000. Currently, we have two pumpers on order, and that will, once we receive these three trucks that I'm talking about now, that will have then replaced all of our frontline apparatus, so one new apparatus for each fire station. Also included in the fire program is some, fire capital equipment replacement, that includes things like self-contained breathing apparatus that are on the trucks, or electronic defibrillators, things like that, that the EMS equipment that would be, you know, used to outfit one of the trucks. So, that pretty much covers everything that I wanted to let you know about in the fleet program. Any questions?
Brian, I have one on the street sweeper, is that just an addition to the fleet?
It's a replacement.
Not the one we just got, is it?
Oh, no. It's actually replacing our oldest one.
Okay, and I think the one we just got a year or so ago, that was a grant, wasn't it?
Yes, we did have one, it was a couple of years ago now, I think.
Couple of years, yeah.
But yeah.
I remember we turned it down, and we ended up having to get it back again, so, are those grants still available?
Not right now. I've been keeping my eye out on some, but I haven't seen any that, well, I know which one you're thinking about, yes, we did purchase one about a year ago, a small one, it was granted through the C MAC, but it was generally was set aside for the new Southeast Connector. And so, yes, it was a smaller unit, but yes, we, we certainly keep an eye out.
Oh, you do a good job on this stuff, I know you do, so, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Back to you, Brian.
Well, that basically completes the presentation, I really appreciate everything, do you guys have any?
Right on, seven and a half minutes.
Any, yeah, 7:45, I think.
It's good.
It only seemed like 45.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. Mr. Driscoll.
So, thank you, Mr. Kason, for what you've done. Basically, this would be the time for council to accept what we've done and allow us to move on to finalize this. There is one component that I'm not settled on yet, and that is the field replacement turf, the turf replacement for GERP, and looking at it over time. Basically, with the work that we're doing now, it looks like we need to start setting out about $1 million a year, pretty much in perpetuity, because we'll be on rotation, the rotation that Brian looked at, that as we replace and you go through that cycle in a five to six-year period of time, it'll be time to replace again. And so, we really don't have a funding source for that. Originally, we're thinking that the franchise fees might be a way, we've, we've got a kind of a third, a third, a third, and, or actually kind of two-thirds to streets and one-third to parks, and we were thinking about a third, third, and third. It appears that we may have some legal difficulties with that, because when we put the franchise fees in place, there were agreements as to what we were doing, and there were things that we told the public we were going to do, and it was voted on by the council to do that. So, short of us finding a separate source to try to come up with that $1 million a year, it may require some action by the council to kind of unwind what we did and rewind, if that's the council's pleasure. So, kind of looking for a general approval of the CIP today, knowing that I'm going to owe you, before we finalize the budgets in May, a, an actual discussion through our technical staff on how we would be looking at $1 million a year in the future for GERP turf.
Fair.
One question I have, and it had to do with that, but also, what are the things we're not doing? I mean, you went through all the things we are doing, but there are things that we would do if we had the finances, are there anything large? I mean, there's probably 100 things we're not doing, but if there's, what are some of the things that you would say are up on that, that we need to be paying attention to? You had one that we pushed off to 2019 with that, with the IT, but I didn't see anything else on here.
Is it, we're holding off? Was it, I'm, in a second, just. In any fund or just that? I mean, basically, 1404, we are pushing off the Police Department HVAC upgrade project, that's $915,000, and then we're also pushing off the chairs in here until next fiscal year or until we have the budget.
Beyond those, which seem could make sense, there's no other large projects that we should be concerned about that we, because we're saying yes to all of this at this time, we're not doing something. What is it that we're not, is there anything large that we're not doing that we should be more concerned about?
For the current year, we've prioritized, and those are the mains, main ones that we pushed off. We do have in the five-year CIP, CIP to plan for other facilities and other items that need to be done, but for the current year, those were the primary items that were pushed out.
One second, Mr. Driscoll. Mr. Lawson's first.
Imagine we could replace the roof on this building if we
Imagine we could replace the roof on this building if we really needed to. Every time it rains, we got buckets everywhere.
And honestly, the roof on this, both the legislative building and the other building, the main building, are not that old. It's primarily around the skylights that we're having problems. So I am, now that we're getting some drying out, I am going to have a roofing company come by and kind of give us some assessments and figure out what we can do to remedy those problems. But that'll come probably out of the annual budget.
My question is on the turf replacement. Do we charge a fee right now for turf replacement at GERP?
No, we do not. It's just basically the rental and lease fees that we have.
I would be interested in, obviously, with the amount of play that gets out there and the amount of teams that come from out of city and out of state to play here.
Maybe I'll have either Tracy or Tony kind of go into further detail about that.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, council members, Tracy Dominguez-Parksen, Recreation Director, and with me is Tony Pele. I'd just like to cite that, you know, every year, we evaluate our fees throughout the Parks and Recreation Department and run those fees and recommendations to our Parks and Recreation Commission. And what we have discovered in all of our programming, and Tony will go into some more detail about Golden Eagle, is that we're pretty much tapped out. I mean, we, if we charge more, people won't come. And Tony, I'm going to let Tony speak to that right now, and then we'll answer any questions that you might have.
I did an assessment of about 20, excuse me, 10 to 15 different parks across the United States to compare our fee structure for what we're charging for tournaments and for, we're annually doing it on our programs, but my main area was to look at our rentals. And in comparison, we are comparative to everywhere across the country. If we go too high, we're going to lose some of these tournaments, the larger events. And in our recreation programming fees, if we were to double the fees to bring in more income, we're going to lose all those teams. Mr. Abbott is a player out there, and if I were to tell the teams, we're going to double the rates, those teams would disappear. So we compare them on a regular basis across the United States to make sure that we are bringing in enough money to take care of business, but not overcharging to where we lose business.
So are we, who are you comparing that has the fields that we have?
Medford, Oregon, for instance.
So they're the same rate? Category we are?
They're actually less.
Do they have some funding source to review? Their replacement of their turf?
Their biggest, I don't know what their funding source is for replacement. They were, they got a major sponsor when they built the complex. It's called U.S. Cellular Fields. So I know they had a lot of funding when they built it. I don't know what their replacement plan is. They have a fee built into their replacement, and I took a look at it, and it came out to 5%. And of their annual income from the park, it would total about $15,000 a year, so I'm not sure.
But they replace one base?
Yeah. It's built into their contract, and I'm like, this isn't going to add up to anything unless it's 100 years from now. So I'm not sure. It was like they put it in there, but it's not realistic. It's not a figure that will ever replace their fields.
You know that the GERP is an economic driver for our region also, so I'm looking for creative ideas that, to come up with that. It's $1 million a year to put on the Citizens of Sparks is a huge amount of money. And, I mean, in the Donald Trump kind of huge amount of money, it's, it's a lot of money. When you have a $63 million budget to put a million bucks out for AstroTurf or for, you know, playing turf, that's a, that's a big percentage of the budget. So I'm looking for some, out of the box, thinking that we can find ways to continue to maintain the excellent fields that we have, that will continue to draw the people to come here and our local citizens playing on the best fields probably in America, next to Medford, Oregon, right?
Or better than they are.
I'd like to also add that in on the Parks and Recreation side of revenues that our department brings in, the revenues come in, both funds, 1221 and 1402, and we're on track to bring in about $680,000 this year. And of that, we spend approximately $650,000. So we are recovering our, our costs of park rangers, all the staff it takes to maintain, or not maintain, but maintain the programming, programming side of everything we do. So on that end, I think that we've exceeded the expectations of cost recovery, but I don't know that it was ever the intent of program fees to be put aside for field replacement or asset management. Don't know, but we are going to think outside the box. We're trying.
Figure something out, because we got a gem out there, and we'd hate to see it go, and when it comes to pushing things off, I mean, we're pushing off IT, we're pushing off heating and air conditioning for the police department. We don't want to push this off, because it just gets more expensive, so, and it's a great driver, and maybe some, come see the RSCBA. Maybe there's something we can do there, because it's a $20 million, basically, in economic benefit, Golden Eagle.
Plus, 22, 22 million.
How many room nights?
I believe it was 45,000 to 55,000 room nights.
That's significant.
Yes.
So we should look at... Outside of the box, come see the RSCBA.
Okay, Mr. Driscoll.
That part of the conversation was going to roll into what I was going to comment on, that since 2008, when we had the recession, and we did everything we could to save bodies, and our infrastructure took the largest hits for the longest period of time, we've been, we've been kind of unwinding, as Mr. Cronk reminds us on a regular basis. And so your staff has done a very good job of taking the monies that they have and looking and prioritizing the projects. That's why it was important for Mr. Kason to show you how we prioritize. And so there's, if you want to know what projects aren't getting done, just look at lists from years two, three, four, and five. Anything in two and three is stuff that was probably stuff we should have done, you know, projects two years ago, three years ago. So that's kind of how you would look at it. Everything that's in the current five-year plan probably needed to be touched over the last 10 years. And so I think it's phenomenal what the staff has been able to accomplish with your direction, and I think that this council has done a tremendous job through their budget policies of being able to get the maximum money to the CIP and to some of these other projects that we could, could do without suffering some of the other programming that we absolutely need to do on a day-to-day basis. So we'll continue under your direction and under your fiscal policies to put the funding in, and then we'll use the priorities that you've given us and that we've designed to make sure that the projects are done as best we can each year with the monies that are available.
I'm certainly proud of the City of Sparks that we don't spend the money that we don't have, stay within budget. Mr., Ms. Bybee.
Actually, this is for Tracy. On the question, you kind of answered my question on revenues for Golden Eagle compared to, we do have a little bit of a cushion there, but it's only, it covers your cost right now, but not the replacement. As you're looking at replacement of the field turf, or whichever turf we choose, when we first started this, it was a whole different industry and technology, has the technology in the field turf, or the, whatever companies are doing it, more companies doing it, and do they last longer? Are the costs to replace, how has that changed in the actual product itself and what we're looking at, on quality, safety measures, the cost itself, and the longevity that could affect, or will affect what we need to pay as we're, as we're upgrading all these fields annually?
Essentially, with Lloyd, who has provided us with the asset management stuff, they have, whenever they originally put the fields in, there really wasn't very many, very many companies out there that installed those fields or produced them. The good news is, there are a lot more nowadays. I mean, there's upwards of four, at least four or five different companies that install the turf. They are improving the turf that they install. They still have, I believe, the same warranties, around an eight-year warranty, but I believe it is, the quality is getting better and better as the years move on.
And there's the option for competitive bid.
And there's...
We're not locked into just one company now.
Exactly, so there's more competitive bidding out there, absolutely.
Okay, because I think that is important. And he mentioned about Oregon. Have we looked at, if we're outside the box, can we name that field? Can we sponsor that field? And look at Switchfield, or Tesla, or one of the other drone companies that are coming to town.
Tracy Dominguez-Parksen, Recreation Director. We are, you know, recently, we took the marketing of Golden Eagle in-house so that we could get more, and staff's done a really good job of doing that. Right now, we're discussing ways to expand that, and don't think that Tesla's not on our radar, but due to the economy, it just wasn't a good time. Our prices were too high, and nothing was really working. Now, we revamped the entire sponsorship and marketing program, and we're hoping with the improved economy that we're going to be able to get a title sponsor out there. We really want a U.S. Cellular-type situation for that park and rename it with a title. That's our goal.
So that would be a possible source of the funding that we would need, and maybe you approach, you approach the big guys, whether it's Switch or Tesla, or ITS Logistics, or some of the very successful companies coming here locally, what our needs are, and it'd be a great opportunity.
I just spoke with staff about that this morning.
Perfect.
To expand what we've got in place and really get a bang for the buck on that.
Mr. Dare.
Actually, that was my question. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, so we're looking for some direction. Good, good job, Brian, really good.
Thank you all for putting up with me for the last hour or so.
That's okay. I have one question on the roof at the museum. There's not a swimming pool in that building, is there?
No, there's not a swimming pool, but it is a very old roof. You get up there, and it's...
No. So the direction, Ms. Bybee.
I just wanted to make a motion to accept the report as presented today with direction to staff to come back for what the city manager had, had stated, to come back to us with a finalized, considering Golden Eagle and other issues, but to accept the report today. Is that what you're looking for, Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Lawson?
Second.
And a second. So you have your direction. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I can do this. There we go. Passing unanimously. Thanks, Brian.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, 9.2. Consideration of and possible approval of request for an extension of time for tentative map to allow a 986-lot single-family residential subdivision. Ian, welcome.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, Ian Crittenden, senior planner. This request is related to Miramonte. The Miramonte tentative map was originally approved in 2005. Since then, there have been eight final maps recorded against it, but the last one was done in August of 2015. The NRS requires those tentative maps to be done in a timely manner, which it calls out as two years in between, or a maximum of two years in between those. The request was made to extend that the future, final maps would be recorded against that. There's a timeline issue that they, they're worried about, and so they wanted to make sure that they got their request in for an extension, which would push them from August of 2017 to August of 2019, to be able to get the issues they need to address dealt with for future final maps. I had the number written down, and I thought I had highlighted it, but they, it is a 986-lot subdivision, and off the top of my head, I'm trying to find the number of, I'm sorry, I thought I had that number right on top of me. No, 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 I'm sorry. The number of lots that are left, or the numbers, so that 900 is the total number in the tentative maps. We've actually recorded quite a few, 589 of which have been approved through the eight final maps. And so we're, we've got quite a few left, but, but less than half.
Addition of 400 to complete it, or?
Yeah, they'll have, in the neighborhood of 400 more that'll, that still need to be final mapped, but there are some hurdles they need to get over that are, they know are going to slow them down, so.
Time extension for a tentative map for Miramonte Plan Development, associated with PCN 04051, for a period not to exceed two years, expire in August 10th of 2019.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second, Mr. Dare?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to... 9.3. Consideration of and possible approval of a tentative map request for 17-lot residential subdivision on site 4.22 acres. You're up again.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, Ian Crittenden, senior planner. So this is a request for a tentative map that also was previously approved back in 2006. This, or a tentative map very similar to this was approved, but has since expired. The property owners would now like to re-tentative map this and come in and try to move forward this. Roughly 17-lot subdivision, potential to be lower than that. There are some concerns coming out of fire about the size of the cul-de-sac at the end. Let me pull up that. There's some concern about the size of the cul-de-sac because of the length of the cul-de-sac, how big that bulb needs to be. Potentially, they may need to lose one or two lots. They're still trying to work that out. It will be finalized in the final map, whether it's a few less, but we figured that at 17, we can always come in with less, and it shouldn't be a problem. As far as the findings that are required for a tentative map, this complies with the master plan and the zoning. At the time that it was originally tentative mapped, 2006, it was annexed, master plan amended, rezoned, all those things at that time, so it's going to be in compliance with those that are in place. The tentative map doesn't deviate from the city's master plan for streets and highways. It will add one public street, or it's intended to add one public street. The, this plan, this tentative map has been forwarded to the proper municipal agencies to look at water, air, all those kind of issues, and they've made comments, and those comments have been incorporated into the conditions of approval. The sufficient water quantities for the, will be, the water rights needed to serve it will be, are in place at the time of the final map. Same issue for other utilities, those will, and sewer, those will be done at the time of the final map. There's a finding addressing schools. This project should add roughly eight students. That's the assessment by the Washoe County School District. Those eight students won't have a significant impact on utility at the, at the schools. Some of those schools are overutilization, but they're looking at adding one or two, three, four. I think the biggest is in the elementary school, and it's five, so that's not enough to cause a major issue there. Police and fire will obviously be served by the city. They're in the five-minute, or the six-minute response time windows for those. The traffic generated from this is not enough to demand a full traffic study, so they just provide a traffic letter, which is standard practice for us. There's no floodplain or slope considerations that need to be specifically addressed for this. It's flattened out of this floodplain. They, all the, the other entities that would need to review this have, have had an opportunity to do so. Their letters were incorporated in the staff report.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, any questions or comments? Any questions or comments?
Yeah, it kind of goes on and on there, but.
Ms. Bybee?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the tentative map for Sierra Shadows, associated with PCN 160052, adopting findings T1 through T12, and the fact supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 11 as listed in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Dare?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Ian. Thank you. 9.4. Discussion and possible direction to staff to negotiate and prepare a development agreement pursuant to NRS 278.0201 concerning the development of Highland Ranch Park. Armando?
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, Smith, and members of the city council on the Land and Water Services Director. Again, as a reference in the title, this agenda item asks the city council to direct staff to proceed with negotiating and preparing a development agreement pursuant to NRS 278.0201 concerning the development of Highland Ranch Park, which is a 67.4-acre property located at the southwest corner -- or southwest corner of the intersection of Highland Ranch Parkway and the Pyramid Highway. So, this is the -- it's comprised of these two parcels here, the small one and the larger one. As the council will recall, the City of Sparks annexed this property in October. During the consideration of the annexation request, there was some concerns on the part of the city council regarding your inability to consider the potential use. This is an issue that would more than likely arise again when we are looking at a master plan amendment, which the applicant is interested in pursuing. So, we believe, after discussions with the applicant and their legal counsel, that the development agreement affords us an opportunity to address all of these issues at one time in the development agreement, and then essentially lay out in the development agreement how they will be -- how these entitlements will be processed. So, the key thing here is, in terms of having a successful development agreement, is that the developer and their representatives will really have to do some project planning because we will be addressing the impacts in the development agreement. And so, in a nutshell, what a development agreement is per NRS 278.0201 is very simply is an agreement with the governing body, with the city council in this case, concerning the development of land, and so we would address in it the changing of the comprehensive plan, land use designation, rezoning, other land use entitlements that may be necessary, such as a conditional use permit, which would be the case if, in fact, they're doing apartments on the site. The timing and if there's going to be any phasing, the phasing of development, and then the terms and requirements for and the financing of public infrastructure, including the property's possible inclusion in impact fee service area number one. So, we would address potentially bringing them into IFASA number one. Finally, the development agreement provides or allows the developer to waive some of the timelines so that we can process some of these things concurrently. So, we believe, again, that this is an appropriate avenue for addressing this project's future development, and would ask that the council give us the direction to go ahead and negotiate and bring back an agreement for future consideration by this body.
Armando, you're going to say exactly the same thing for 9.5 also?
Other than the only thing that I will add on that one is that because that property has not been annexed, we would be addressing the --
Okay, all right. Mr. Dare?
I first want to thank the staff for obviously continuing to look at our city and things we need to do, but also working with our developers to find ways to walk forward, and so I think it's -- I appreciate it. But I'd also like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to direct staff to negotiate and prepare for future consideration by the city council, a NRS 278.0201 development agreement for the Highland Ranch Park property.
Ms. Bybee?
I wanted to discuss.
Second and for discussion?
I'll second, and then open for discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Bybee?
Armando on this end, they still -- it kind of makes things more clear to the developers that are moving forward, what conditional uses, what their costs would be. They still have to go through the process of rezoning and approvals for everything from sewer, fire, adding apartments or whatever. All of those things still have to go through that, the normal approval process.
Yes, that's correct. Essentially, what we would be doing is we would, you know, be working with the developer to make sure that the planning is done on the front end, and then we would be looking to then line up all of those subsequent approvals so that they can -- once the front-end planning is done, they can proceed, you know, relatively smoothly and quickly through that process. But yes, to answer your question, every one of those approvals is still required on, you know, per state law and per our municipal code.
And this is just a different way of -- by setting up the development agreement, it kind of helps staff, but it also helps the developer understand what things, whether it's bigger sewer lines, the impact of fire, the actual density of what's allowed on that land compared -- it gives them a clearer picture, working with staff, of what -- how they could make it work.
Correct.
With staff and with whatever policy or zoning or with all the restrictions that we might have, working together so that the project can happen, and that might be adjustments by the developer on what they want to do. And do you think it's just -- it's a way to streamline?
Yeah, I think it's a way both to clarify, you know, the respective responsibilities of the parties, and certainly the objective is to ultimately to streamline this and to increase the predictability of the process. But, you know, each of those approvals requires certain findings, and they will have to be made by the planning commissioner, by the city council before, you know, they can take place.
And city and everything, all those still have to be on the rezoning, have to be approved.
Yes.
Based on what the zoning criteria are for right now, and if they want to change that, it goes through that same process?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no more discussion, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 9.5. Discussion and possible direction to staff to negotiate, prepare a development agreement pursuant to NRS 278.0201 concerning the development of the quarry. Armando?
The quarry is -- oh, sorry, let's see. Across the street, and it is this parcel here. Again, here is Pyramid Highway, and here is Highland Ranch Parkway, and it is this parcel here, which is approximately 387 acres in size. In this instance, we would be looking to have the development agreement in place before we annex the property, and in fact, we would anticipate, and certainly would be staff's goal, to make clear what the conditions proceeding are to the city annexing the property. So, very similar agreement, but we're starting earlier in the process, so there's some additional things.
Ms. Bybee?
I like this a lot because I think this is a better process for us to use, both for the city and for the -- it's, you know, the impact of, as we look at annexations. So, I like this because it's real upfront with all the information that the developer needs, and then what we can do working with them, because certainly, you know, we do want to work with development as we need the expansion of our -- throughout the city. But I like this process better because before we annex, we would have information that we're working with the developer, and they would also too, to know if it pencils out for them. So, I appreciate this, and I like this process, so I would be -- I will be supporting that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Looking for a motion? Mr. Dare?
I move to direct staff to negotiate and prepare for future consideration by the city council, a NRS 278.0201 development agreement for the quarry property.
Okay, Mr. Abbott. We have a motion and a second. Any other -- any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Armando. Okay, move to public hearing, 10.1. Public hearing, consideration and possible approval of a boundary line adjustment between properties owned by the City of Sparks and the City of Sparks Redevelopment Agency for the development of the Fountain House Phase II project. John?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, John Erickson, city engineer for the record. The City of Sparks Redevelopment Agency is requesting a boundary line adjustment to a parcel property owned by the City of Sparks. There's actually two parcels that we're looking at. It's parcel E, and it's this area one, and then parcel D, which is the area two. This is right in front of the movie theater. Under NRS 279.432, the City of Sparks is allowed to dedicate, sell, convey, or lease any of its properties to a redevelopment agency. The areas are required for a building footprint, electrical and motor services for the proposed project. This is the Fountain House Phase II project. The transfer of the two areas will not adversely impact the city-owned parcel situated between the agency parcels. Staff recommends that council approve the boundary line adjustment request. That concludes my presentation.
Questions, comments? Looking for a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. This is a public hearing. I'll open up the public. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? We know how to clear a room. Seeing none?
We got two standing by the door, ready to run.
So, we'll bring it back to the council. Looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the boundary line adjustment requested as outlined by staff.
Okay, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, John. Okay, we'll move on to planning and zoning. We have none comments. Comments from the public? Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Comments from the city council and city manager, Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I have two announcements. The first, the following committee appointments are available. The Truckee River Flood Advisory Committee, one member. There's no term. Members serve at the pleasure of the council. Qualification, ideally, a committee member would have familiarity with the Truckee River watershed and bring technical expertise that helps with the evaluation and selection of projects. Persons -- we're going to be accepting applications on this position until Friday, March 17th at 5:00 p.m. The second is the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority Board of Trustees, one member, a partial term from present until June 30th of 2019. This will be replacing Mr. Mayberry, who will be leaving the city shortly. Qualifications, one, they have to have experience in aviation business or the tourism industry; two, have experience in finance or accounting; or three, possess other such qualifications that the appointing authority determines are necessary for or appropriate for carrying out the duties of the board. So, we'll be accepting applications here until close of business on Friday, March 31st. Persons that are interested in serving on these committees should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cytosparks.us. Click on Government on the webpage, then under Boards and Commissions, you click Volunteering for a Sparks Board or Commission, fill out the online application, and submit. That's all I have, sir.
Any other comments from members of the council? I have a couple. One, the first thing is the flood project. I would like to see something come forward that this council can approve. I think the flood project is very important, and we need to support it because we are the ones that are affected mostly on that, so if we can have some sort of a resolution that we can look at and see if it's something we want to do. The second one, speaking of resolutions, there's been some talk and comments made on a particular resolution that was -- that we've -- we actually talked about it, and there could be a violation of the open meeting law. We have self-reported it as a council, which I think is the right thing to do, so we're looking to see something come before the council, so if there is a problem, we can deal with it at that time. Mr. Adams, I think you're taking care of the legal aspects of this.
I have an item. I'm one of my deputies now.
Okay.
We'll discuss that briefly in our next meeting.
Yep, okay. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, without objection, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of March 13th, 2017, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini, absent. Dare?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Item number three, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number four, 4.1. Looking for approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Dare?
I move to approve again. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All the -- please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.1, minutes, consideration and possible approval, the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of February 27th, 2017. Do I have any corrections, additions, or a motion to approve? Mr. Dare?
Move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lawson. Any discussion?
Abbott.
Oh, Mr. Abbott, I'm sorry.
I throw my -- I'm a ventro.
You were blocking him there. Okay, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Business item six, 6.1, Report of Claims and Bills for Approval and Appropriation Transfers for the period February 9th through February 22nd, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second. Third.
So, who moved? Mr. Smith?
Agency Member Smith moved to approve. Agency Member Lawson, the second. All those, please vote. Okay, motion carries. 6.2, Public Hearing. Consideration and possible approval of a boundary line adjustment between properties owned by the City of Sparks and the City Sparks Redevelopment Agency for the redevelopment of Fountain House Project, Phase II project. Okay, once again, we have Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, John Erickson, city engineer.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's a public hearing.
Jumped the gun.
He jumped it. Okay, this is a follow-up to the item that we just approved at the city council meeting, correct? Okay. So, this is the same continuation of the item that was just presented before the city council on the property line adjustments. Okay, being this is a public hearing, do I have any comments from the public on this item? Okay, seeing none, I need an official motion. Mr. Lawson, Agency Member Lawson?
To approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Dare. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Okay, item number seven, comments from the public. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, move on to 7.2, comments from the agency and chief administrative officer. Any comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned.